I'd like to call the Malmell City Council meeting to order. First, I need to let you know that Alderman Saunders will not be here tonight. He's got a family member that's in the hospital in very critical condition. And so, he couldn't be with us tonight. So, if you would, remember his family. And also, remember Alderman Hoag's family. She's got a family member also in the hospital. So, remember her. And she didn't know if she was gonna be here. So, we're glad to see that she made it here. So, but remember those two families in your prayers. The first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I've asked Clerk Clausen to lead us in that. So, if you'd all please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet here tonight, to do the business of this wonderful city and community that we live in. We're grateful for the blessings of thy hand that we acknowledge during especially this Easter season and the blessings that we've been given. We pray that as we are here this evening, that we would have thy Spirit to be with us, that we might make good decisions, that we might be wise stewards, mindful of the responsibilities that we've been given. We pray that thou would be with the family of Alderman Saunders and Alderman Hoag and all those who are in need this evening, who are struggling with illness or any other affliction. We pray that thou would bless those who protect and serve this great company, this great country, and also those who serve in this city. And we ask for these blessings and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first order of business tonight is we have special guests and announcements. And we want to recognize some accomplishments that have been made by a school and by a student within that school, well, several students actually. But we want to recognize the Academics Plus Charter School Bowling Team who finished fourth place in the 1A to 3A girls' state bowling tournament. And especially Shania O'Neal, who's a senior at the school, who won first place in the individual 1A to 3As girls' state bowling championship with 576 points. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Shania to come up and Coach Holland and Coach Mallory to come up. And we're gonna make some presentations. Shania, I'd like to present you with a key to the city for your accomplishment in scoring 576 points, was that right? And winning the state individual championship in the girls' tournament. So, look this way and let's get a picture made, Dave. All right? Congratulations. For leading the team to the fourth place finish, we'd like to present you with a key to the city also. And Coach Holland. On your accomplishment of placing fourth place and leading this team of students to the bowling state championship, we'd sure do appreciate that and congratulate you. Here's this for that. And Coach Holland also would like to make a presentation on behalf of the school.
This year has been very special to me, to be around a young lady that, my gosh, is so special to our school. I wanted to give her something from all of our team, to let her know that it's awesome to win a state championship.
You don't know what that is? It's a bowling pin. Just thought we'd point that out. And it's signed by all the other teammates, is that right, Coach? Is it signed by the teammates? Yeah, yeah. Okay, and it's not on the agenda, but we've also got another special presentation tonight to make. This should've been done about a year ago, but there was a problem with the diploma. And so, we're gonna do it tonight. A diploma got damaged and it takes awhile to get another one sometimes. But I'd like to recognize our interim chief, John Payne. Chief, if you'd come on up. Interim Fire Chief John Wayne Payne has successfully completed the Executive Fire Officer Program at the National Fire Academy, Emmitsburg, Maryland campus. Dr. Dennis O'Neal, Superintendent of the National Fire Academy, Division of the United U.S. Fire Administration, stated, "Executive fire officers have a tremendous responsibility to lead their organization and communities through changing times." The Executive Fire Officers Program is a four-year program that requires 80-plus hours each year of on-campus classroom study and research. Upon returning home, the student is given six months to complete the required research papers. The National Fire Academy awards 16 master-level hours for completion of the four courses, executive development, executive analysis of community risk reduction, executive analysis of fire service operations and emergency management, and executive leadership. Required research papers must be written for each course and correspond with the individual's community before being awarded the diploma. So, I wanna read the diploma, actually, also. And it says, "The United States Fire Administration, National Fire Academy, in recognition of successful completion of the requisite courses of study and applied research projects, the National Fire Academy, under the authority granted by the 111th Congress of the United States of America and on recommendation of the faculty, confers the title Executive Fire Officer upon John Wayne Payne, with all honors and privileges and responsibilities therunto pertaining, awarded this 15th day of March 2013, Federal Emergency Management Agency." So, this is about a year late, but we want to honor Chief Payne with this diploma. Thank you, Chief. We have another officer that's also in that school now, is that correct, Captain? Captain Eaton is actually attending it now. And so, I heard you might wanna say something, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't mind, no, sir.
Good evening, sir, Council. My name's Scott Eaton. I live at 4 Eisenhower Cove. As you can see, I'm also a captain with the Malmell Fire Department. I just wanted to give my thanks, 'cause the past two weeks, I've been at the National Fire Academy. I'm in year two of that four-year program, community risk reduction. It encompasses a whole lot of stuff. But as you hear, we get master-level credit. I got 5.8 hours for two weeks' worth of work. If you've ever done a master-level course, can't see why they didn't just give me six. But I'll take 5.8. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to do that and represent Malmell. I'm in class with people from Austin, Texas, Boston, Houston, and then Malmell, Arkansas. So, it's awesome to talk about the city of Malmell against some of these big hitters. One of the people that we're in class with is Chief Arangelo. He's the chief of Watertown, the second dude of Boston. If you remember from the news, that's where the bombers ran and hid, and the boat was in Watertown. So, he was the commander that they had the city shut down and do an area-wide manhunt. To hear his experience and how he dealt with that, that's the stuff that we learn while we're at the National Fire Academy. It's not all just classroom stuff. It's to hear experiences like that. So, thank you so much for supporting us and letting us go to that. The government does reimburse the city. However, the city does have to put money up front first before it's reimbursed. So, it is a huge part for the city to say, yes, we will send people, they will represent us. And as you can see, it's a huge honor, 'cause if I stick it out, 'cause now I have six months to write a paper. If I stick it out for another four years, hopefully, sir, I'll be up here getting one of those as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Captain. Also, before we release the charter school people, I'd like Mr. McGill to come up. He wanted to say a few words to the council also.
Thank you for the opportunity. Rob McGill, Academics Plus Charter School, 900 Edgewood. Just wanted, first of all, thank you for the presentation tonight. That means a lot, not only to the individuals, but also the community, school community as a whole. And I do want to give you a little update also on the cap increase. We were successful. I do appreciate the support from the city for that, because it meant a lot. And I think them, especially with the troubles other charter schools have had with necessarily having support of the city, but having your support definitely meant a lot to end that endeavor. Also, thank Preston Lewis and Birch Johnson, and also Mayor Watson for being present that day. You know, it was good to be able to just say, hey, we've got city officials here today. So, I know not everybody can take off work. So, it's not anything negative on anybody that couldn't be there. But appreciate all your support and everything. We will be, we have now enrolled 750 for next year, and looking forward for 850 the following year. But even with the 750 we have enrolled for next year now, we still have 250 on the waiting list. So, it's going very well and appreciate your support. And otherwise, without any questions, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. And you're welcome to leave if you were here for the presentations we just did. We're not gonna make you stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay, all right. Yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
We lost our crap.
It's kinda like the wrestling crew.
Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes of the April 7 regular meeting. All the Aldermen have a copy of those minutes in their packages. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I approve, I move that we approve the minutes.
It's been motion second that the council approved the minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Not all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next item is public comment, and I've got a couple of comment cards here tonight. And so, at this time, we'll go to public comment. The first one I have is from Ms. Laura Green.
My name is Laura Green. I live in 5 Barber Cove, and we've lived there for 22 years. There's always been water issues around our house. Our garage has flooded many times, and in May 1, 2011, our house flooded. My purpose here tonight is to get the city of Malmell to stop giving me empty promises and to get a plan and start the improvements needed to help the flooding situation. I'm very disappointed in the city of Malmell. I feel I've been ignored and pushed aside for many, many years. Over the last few years, it takes less water, less rain, to flood the area around my house. I know the engineers have already given their recommendations, but I don't believe that the plan of two holding pools in the common area would really help the situation, since the water is still going to drain in front of my house. Mayor Watson has indicated to me that he would meet with the city engineers this week to see what else can be done. Mayor, is that still on their schedule this week?
It's still on the schedule, yes, ma'am.
We also have sinkholes that have been an issue and contribute to standing water and poor drainage. I get nervous every time it rains. At night, I'm constantly looking out the window. I ask that all of you put yourselves in my shoes and ask yourselves, what would you be doing in my situation? I've had no help or support from the city of Malmell. The answer I get is, yes, we know there's a problem. The drainage system is old. The drainage problem is not going to get any better. It's only gonna get worse as time goes by and the drains deteriorate even more. Improvements need to be done now to fix it long-term, not temporary. The city of Malmell has known of the drainage issue in my area for many, many years. So, I don't know why more money is not allocated for all these old drainage systems. So, I just ask all of you tonight to please consider the much-needed improvements in the drainage area and system in my area.
And Ms. Green sent some pictures. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could bring those up.
This is our street. You can see things floating. And the water comes from like the middle of these two houses, the streets down here. There's a manhole here that pops open all the time and the water goes like a geyser at six feet tall. That's my backyard. This is behind the fence and the common area where the trails are. And that is also in the area, the trail, the trail there. This is my neighbor across the street, their house. The water comes through their house, down their driveway. Comes from Randall Cove, there's no drainage system, no drainage in Randall Cove. It comes through the back of their house in the street. And this was when our house was flooded, that was my bed. That's how much water was on my front porch. And this is the side of my house in the garage, this common area, the trails. The water comes down there, comes around here, 'cause Hovin Cove is in the back, water comes from there. And I get water coming around my neighbor's house and it all goes into my garage. We have to open our gates every time it rains to let the water flow through from the back of the common area and come through and out into the street. And this is happening, a week ago Sunday it happened. I just saw that. So, it doesn't take much rain anymore for this to happen.
I will say that I went out there last Friday and met with Ms. Green and two of her neighbors that were in that area, and they all relayed the same issue that we're having. So, we're gonna try to see if we can somehow direct the water away from the cul-de-sac, because once it gets to the cul-de-sac, basically, then it can't get out of there. So, if we can divert it around, and she's right, I'm not sure that if we do the detention ponds, what's gonna happen when they fill up? Then it's still gonna go to the cul-de-sac. So, it's a matter of trying to divert it around the cul-de-sac and get it on to the golf course area. Now, that's a pretty good run away from this property. It's gonna be a-
And there's three drains in the street, but all the drains lead to one on the side of my house. They all have to go in the same area, so.
That's correct. I've got some lights on here. I don't know if they're, are there questions for Ms. Green or not? Alderman Mosley?
What day were these pictures taken? Was it that Sunday?
Oh, no, some of these are old, but way, going way back to 2001. But see, when our house flooded on May 1, it was midnight. Couldn't really get any good pictures, 'cause it was dark.
All right. Now, it rained really hard here a week ago on Sunday.
Sunday, and the street did flood.
Did you, you had it then?
And our yard flooded too.
Okay. How much did it rain that day, do you know?
I don't know.
All right. There was a Sunday way back around Christmas where it rained like four or five inches. Did you guys have it then?
We were out of town.
Okay, you didn't see it.
We didn't flood, so, no, I don't know.
If I, it seemed like we approved some drainage projects a few months ago. Director Cogdale was here, and there were like four or five projects or something that he was-
We approved the Odom pipe drainage, is what we approved. There was two.
There wasn't anything in regard to that in that deal?
No, sir.
So, we don't have anything in the budget right now?
Well, we've got drainage money in the budget. I just don't know if it's gonna be enough to do this project, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
There's always money to do drainage projects, 'cause we do them all over, all the time, so. Alderman Johnson?
I would like to point out, you know, I've seen it. It's been there a long time and it doesn't get any better. But the mayor needs our help. In other words, it's up to the eight of us to approve the funds, either out of reserve or whatever. And he may be talking a lot of money to correct this. And I was with him and saw it and everything like that. But it's in the eight of our hands to allocate the money to do the job. Whatever, hey, and we don't know what the job is and we don't know what the cost is, but it could be tremendous.
But it's only gonna get worse.
That's right. And it's up to the eight of us.
And it's not gonna get any better.
Yeah, if they come, if he comes in at $100,000, it's up to eight of us to do what we think is right after seeing these pictures. And this is not new. She said 2001, I remember.
You were there.
I was there.
All of you, you were there.
And we tried to do little things, but little things are not working. And the mayor needs our help on this as much as anything.
Alderman Lewis?
Couple of questions I had. As far as the actual elevation of the property, do we know anything within that area as far as relation to the floodplain?
It's not in a floodplain.
It's not?
No, it isn't.
Okay. Now, I didn't think that it was, but just wanted to cover that. Additionally, we've sent our own city engineers out there on at least one trip. Was there more?
There's been more than one trip, yes, yes.
I've seen them twice. I've talked to them twice out there.
Okay. And that was Mazan?
This is Mazan, yes, yes.
So, our own city engineer's gone out on a couple of occasions, and this is the plan that we've come up with, which you've expressed that you have some misgivings about. You know, the question I would have at this point is, would it perhaps be valuable for us to consider bringing in a second opinion on this from an outside engineering?
Well, I don't think that's necessary right now. But the thing I think we need to look at is relieving what's there currently. And it's basically gonna be adding another pipe to the downstream section. And so, I'm gonna get his opinion on that and see if we can do something to that effect.
You know, a pipe that would go where?
It would go to the pond on the golf course.
Okay.
On hole number two, 'cause that's where the current drainage goes now. Now, that's the issue, is we're gonna have to cross the golf course, so.
Right, right.
There's some current pipes going that direction now. And they may be overwhelmed, or as Ms. Green pointed out, we have some sinkholes. And we did, we sent Public Works crews out last Monday, and they found leaves in the manhole that she described that shoots up the geyser. And we find those leaves almost every time this time of year, because there's a large pipe feeding that box, and there's two small pipes that come out of it because of a utility conflict that was there. So, basically, the leaves can't get through that small pipe. It's what happens, and it clogs up. And so, then it forms the, they call it surcharging, is what that curb or the junction box is doing when it comes up.
And it's, you know, these are all, Ms. Green and I have spoke on numerous occasions, and, but I've complimented her, because, you know, it's really easy for a lot of people to have issues in their neighborhood and just say, well, nobody cares, nobody does anything. You've certainly kept after the council and the mayor and-
Well, after 20 years, I'm getting real tired of it. So, probably be seeing a lot of them into-
And I hope we do, because you know what?
Because it's been a long, long time.
It takes active people in the neighborhood to, you know, help make things better. And that's what you're trying to do. The one thing that I would say is, I hope we do have some sort of an update by our next meeting. And whatever the decision is, you know, I recognize we have to be careful, because you make one change and then you could negatively affect another area as well.
Which may have happened when we put in, you put in that extra drainage.
Perhaps so.
And I think that might be where all the leaves are coming from, and, 'cause it sits way out there with, under the trees, and, you know, it was to help Randall Cove, which maybe helped them, but it made it worse on us.
Was that additional pipe part of the last summer's recommendations from the city engineer?
No.
That's something we've just been aware of, but we just haven't executed.
Right, trying to do it as least costly as possible, so, yeah.
Other than the cooperation with Malmell Country Club, is there anything else, aside from the funds, that would keep us from starting that work immediately?
Well, we have to do design plans, and we may have to bid out the job. It may be too big a job for our crews to do.
The design plans, but yet we've known about this for some time?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Anderson?
Alderman Lewis and Alderman Johnson.
I have questions for her, one for her.
We're stating that she's known about this for a long time, or that we've known about this for a long time. So, I was just trying to get my mind around why it's taken from 2001 to now to really kinda come before the council like this, in this setting. Is it because we were doing things along and along, and then we've just kind of realized that it's gonna take a bigger project? Or, I'm just trying to figure out why the timeframe has happened in this situation.
Well, it's a combination. It's funds and it's trying to do the right thing. I don't wanna spend any more money and not solve the problem. And so, it's trying to figure out exactly what to do, but it is funds. I mean, we have so much funds allocated for do drainage projects on an annual basis, and we work on drainage projects year-round.
I know that we had a similar issue over near Ophelia. And it took a pretty long time before we could finally fix it.
Right, and it's-
And I know they had the same frustration. That doesn't help you in any, but it's, you know, it's kind of one of those things that, you know, it's money, it's timing, it's-
That's why I'm afraid that if they do the ponds, it's not really gonna take care of the problem. So, instead of spraying the money with that, I think it would be better to have a better solution. I don't think that's gonna help.
Well, if we're gonna spend the money, we definitely want it to be on the-
Right.
The ponds will work up to a certain point. But if it rains an extended period of time, then once the ponds fill up, the only place they're gonna go is right back to where they're going right now. And so, 'cause the ponds would be upstream from the cul-de-sac at Barber Cove. So, if they overtop, they're coming right back down through the same area. And that's how we've gotta reroute it around that cove, if at all possible, and have an additional outlet to get it away from that area. Now, the same thing, we, it's, Alderman Lewis pointed out, we can't cause a problem downstream either. That's what you've always gotta worry about, is transferring the issue downstream, so,
okay, thank you for helping clarify that.
Alderman Hoag?
I wanted to ask, has this continually gotten worse, has there's been more construction in that area, up on the hills or something? There's no construction there, and that hasn't been a problem? There are places all over Malmell that has been adversely affected by flooding, and a lot of it, I think, has been because of construction up on higher elevations. And I just wondered if that, you know, I understand we need to figure out what the problem is and see what we can do. Okay, that's what I wanted to ask.
Alderman Johnson?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Green for coming and ask her, please, don't let us let up one time. Hey, if you wait too much and you hadn't heard anything, come back here and we keep everybody posted. But to go to your, Rick, your situation, my first question to the mayor was maybe what we had done major work just north of there. And we had moved dirt, brought in piles of dirt, and did a lot of things and everything. And we thought we'd fixed it. Well, maybe we didn't have the right engineer, I'm not sure what, but we went to a major thing. But from what I see, it was bad then, but it's worse now. So, I asked them if maybe what we did just made it worse. And, you know, I think they deserve help, and we need to do whatever it takes. And hey, if we're going over there, all of us Aldermen and putting a shovel in the ground and digging holes, we'll do that too.
Now, be careful, Barry.
I volunteer me.
Alderman Lewis?
Make sure you call ARCAPs first, permission to dig before you go out there. Mention the design, and one other thing too, you know, sometimes it could be adverse things that we've done in the past that have exacerbated this, but there's also, you know, it's just, given the age of the area, so many trees in which have gotten larger, the root systems are more invasive, you know, this could also just be a factor of time that has made this, you know, substantially worse. Mentioned that drainage pipe, one other question, Mr. Mayor, that pipe, would that be something, once we do go into the design phase, is that something that's designed in-house, or do we have an outside firm?
Well, it's our city engineer that would typically design that. It's an outside firm. They're not a, they're not a city employee. It's a contract.
Okay. That's done by another engineer besides ours? So, we contract with our own engineer to design that?
To do a project above and beyond what his normal engineering duties are.
Okay. And in either, regardless if we go with these two detention ponds, plan or not, that pipe will be part of any plan, right?
Well, I'm not gonna speak for the engineer. I mean, that's what I think is the problem, but I'm not an engineer. So, I think we need an additional pipe, but it's gonna be whatever the engineer, if he may say that's not gonna help, you need to, and it could be we've got a collapsed pipe. I mean, we could have a collapsed pipe that if it's fixed, it could solve the problem. But we've had the guys- But we've had the guys check it, but it could be 300 feet down a, down a pipe that they're not seeing or something like that.
How, what is the method? Is there a dye method for testing that? How is that done?
Well, you lamp them is one way of doing it. You put a spotlight down them and try to see the full moon of a light through it. And you can do some dye. That's, that's kind of iffy at best sometimes, but it may or may not come out, because you're trying to test it when you've got flow through there. And sometimes you can see it and sometimes if the water gets diluting it too much, you don't actually see the dye come out.
Well, just hope we don't have a lot of rain all at once for the meantime, but we need to move absolutely quickly, because I feel like, you know, we have dropped the ball and we need to move fast. Thank you.
Mayor, someone, one time, it's going way back, told me that they have some kind of robot thing that you could put in a line and it'll go down and give you a picture all the way down the line.
Left cameras, yes.
Yeah, you know, I just throw that out because.
Yeah. Yeah, they have pipe cameras, yeah, that thing you go down. Now, sometimes it's, you know, size of pipe and if there's rubble, it has a hard time negotiating that, so, yeah.
It's over my head, but I'd heard about it.
Well, they do them a lot. They call them sewer cameras. They use them a lot in sanitary sewer. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Okay. The next public comment card is actually on an item we got real late in our agenda, but there's been a request that they'll be allowed to go. You're going to wait? Okay. All right. All right. All right, we'll hold that until later then, so just forget I said that. Next item is financial statement review, and we do that at the second meeting of each month. And you have a copy of the financials in your packet. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Alderman Mosley?
I noticed, I noticed the county millage tax revenues is running significantly less than budget at this point. And just wanted to check and see, see what that might be. And I also noticed expenses are running below normal and was hoping that trend might continue if somebody had some thoughts on that.
The expenses, not a lot of thoughts on that right now, because we're just in the first quarter of the year. So, it's probably just, you know, going to catch up here shortly. Nothing significant has happened to make me think that we won't catch up with that. And the millage, you will see a huge increase around May, which is when a lot of times the mortgage companies pay the property taxes. And so, we'll catch up then, but we are in line.
Okay. I noticed, yeah, it is, it is running pretty close to last year, it looks like, so, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, our budget, the way we get the budget, you just take the total amount and we divide it by 12. But especially on millage, we get two big payments. You'll get one in May and you'll get another one in November. It's what you typically do. When they collect it at the assessor's office or tax collector's office, when they collect it there, then they remit it to us, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Alderman Johnson?
Just to play on words, on the first page where we have 2014 budget, 2014 budget revised, and the next one says 12-month budget. That always confuses me a little bit, because it's the three-month budget, just to play on 12 versus three and everything like that. And then we go back over and it says actual at 3/31/13, so we, just to play on words, I don't know if it's confusing to anyone else but me, but, okay. Just thought.
Let me know if I need to make some changes there in the wording, the title.
And what we're trying to indicate there is basically just the budget's divided by 12 and then multiplied times three. Yeah, you're right. I mean, 12-month budget is probably not the correct terminology, but that's, we're trying to convey that it's three months worth of the budget.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I just play on words.
I don't even look at the titles anymore, so. I just look at the columns, yeah, just the numbers, yeah.
I bet I do the same thing.
Okay. So, there's not any more questions? An entertaining motion to approve?
Excuse me, I got one last question. And I'm having problems in my mind deciphering when I flip over to the, well, it's general fund budget, so I'm not, probably not in the right area. Maybe I am with the commute service fee. And it says accounts receivable 77025. But we all have a report that has been distributed that shows 300 and something thousand dollars past due. And I don't know how to relate the 77,000 to the 300,000 and everything like that. And, you know, I know the 300,000 may go back for years.
Right. So, the reason why you only see 77,000 there in accounts receivable is because what we do is we take the current balance of accounts receivable and subtract our allowance for doubtful accounts, which are the ones that we expect to not receive. So, like you say, majority of our balances is over 120 days. So, there's very little there that we expect to receive from that. So, that's why it shows that way. So, that is a net.
Make it a little more of a realistic picture.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lewis?
What's the criteria for a doubtful account?
Criteria?
What makes an account doubtful?
Well, a non-payment would be enough, one reason. What we do is we take all of our balances in the accounts receivable based on the number of days that they are past due. And then we allocate a percentage of that as far as what we think would be uncollectible. We determine that percentage based on past collections.
Okay.
So, based on past collections is how we determine what the balance and allowance needs to be.
Okay. Thank you. Good answer.
A bank will usually not let you go more than 90 days, so, yeah, yeah.
I move we approve them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financials for March 31, 2014. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Still move.
Second.
It's been motion and second that the council read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the third reading ordinance, number 846, amending a master street plan. I have, I'm requesting that the council make a motion to defer this until our May 19th meeting.
Still move.
Second.
It's been motion and second that the council defer this until the May 19th meeting. This is the, I don't even want to do the third reading, but it's the, for the, the third reading, which would be for a master street plan amendment for the driveway for the fire station is what it's for. So, just to make sure everybody understands that. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. This item is deferred until May the 19th. Next item is the third reading of ordinance, number 847, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Malmel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance, number 847, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets, drainage in Phase 2 of the villages of New Bedford and Malmel, Arkansas, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is the third reading of ordinance, number 847, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. If.
I move we approve ordinance, number 847.
Second.
It's been motion and second that the council approve ordinance, number 847. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, or, excuse me. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Hoag.
Yes.
Alderman Norris.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance, number 848, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Malmel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance, number 848, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets, drainage in Phase 5 through 8 of Osage Hills in Malmel, Arkansas, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Okay. There's no action required of this item. It'll be on third reading at the next meeting. There's no questions. Next item is resolution number 2014-15, approving a conditional use permit. This is also related to the conditional use permit for the fire station that would be located in the open space zone. I'm also requesting that the council make a motion to defer this item also until May the 19th. I will tell you that we are in negotiations with a property owner right now. They're complicated at best right now, but we are making some headway, I think. And hopefully, right now, it looks like we would be bringing back something maybe on May the 5th as far as possible contract. That's our, that's our timing that we're shooting for right now. But it's, it is, it's, it's kind of like somebody has to move first type deal and so, it's kind of waiting each other out. But we have made an offer and so hopefully, we'll be moving forward on that soon.
I move we approve resolution. I mean, we defer.
Defer.
Second.
2014-15.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to defer resolution 2014-15 till May the 19th. Okay.
You have a second, too.
Okay. All right. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading ordinance, number 849, amending zoning Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Malmel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance, number 849, an ordinance amending the zoning regulations to establish car washes as a conditional use in a commercial zone and permitted use in other commercial zones in the City of Malmel and for other purposes.
Alderman Hoag?
Is this something that's just a cleanup issue or do we have someone that might like to put in a car wash?
I'm going to let Mr. Neri answer that, so.
Jim Neri, Director of Planning and Zoning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At one time, we did, and that's how this came to light, a gentleman visited with me about possibly establishing a new car wash in Malmel. So, I'm looking in the blue book and I see that we, we have the definition for car wash, but we don't have it in any zoning district. It's the same situation a few months ago that came to you all as far as nursing home and convalescent center. We had the definitions, but we didn't have it under any zoning district. So, we decided to clean that up while it was brought to the forefront.
And it will still be conditional use?
In some zoning districts. I visited with the City of Little Rock, City of North Little Rock, Conway, Shorewood, to see what they did. And most do the same thing with one or two exceptions. It's a conditional use in their lighter commercial categories, which is what staff proposed for this, C1 and C2. It's a conditional use, which would be town center and where we are tonight, village center. It would be a permitted use by right in C3 and C4, which are our most, if you will, disruptive type commercial zoning districts. C3 is service commercial. That would be the area where Malmel U Storage is, as an example, Parkway Square off Country Club Parkway. And of course, we only have one C4 area in all of Malmel, and that would be Morgan Highway Commercial. Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes, sir. The, you mentioned something square off of.
Parkway Square.
Okay. Is that the little shopping center or whatever right behind Regions Bank?
Yes, sir.
And that is C3?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, I would, if one of those buildings burned down, I would kind of hate to see a car wash go in there by right. What's an example of C1 and C2 right now?
C2 would be town center. That would be Cheers, Dollar General, the Town Center Shopping Center, what we call the Sears Center, all the way down Country Club, or all the way down Club Manor, even to the Girl Scout property there at the levee along the dam on Lake Willistine. You're in C1 now. This is called Village Center.
Okay.
And it probably is our lightest category.
All right. What would we need to do to, now, conditional, we can, we can oppose, we can say no for any reason, is that correct?
You can put.
As long as it's not an illegal reason. As long as it's not an illegal reason, for instance, discriminatory, some discriminatory reason, as long as it's a legitimate reason for saying no.
Say, for example, that example I brought up, if, if one of those buildings burned down, somebody wanted to put a car wash in there and we said no, that that's not appropriate, is that discriminatory?
Not unless you're doing it because you don't like the person who's trying to put it there.
Oh, okay.
You can, the planning commission, the city council can also impose conditions as they see fit. We think you should only be open this long. We think you should be fully automated and not staffed, or whatever and whatever.
What would we need to do to also make for C3 have that also conditional? Can we, can we modify this at this point and make it, make that conditional also?
You can amend it.
It's the first reading.
Yes.
It would, it would change it so we'd go back to first, it'd have to be first read for the first time again, but, but my council has the authority to amend it.
Well, just for, just for purposes of being caution, I would like to make that amendment that, that also C3 be included in, in the conditional. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion to amend it to where it's also a conditional use in C3. Mr. Neri, I got a question. With the way ours is written already, does that make it also a conditional in C4?
It does not.
Does not?
No, sir. Because I think, if memory serves me correctly, and I made a look at how that ordinance is written again, because I hadn't looked in a while, if we put it as a use by right in C3, and we didn't also do that in C4, it could very well make it a conditional use in C4.
Okay. All right.
I second his motion.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance to make car washes also a conditional use in C3 only, is the way I heard the motion, is that correct? All right. Alderman Anderson?
I just wanted to know, was it unanimous with the planning commission to go forward with it the way that it's written now?
Yes, sir. We, I think we had one commissioner absent if memory serves me correctly.
So, there was no pushback on the C3 and C4?
No, sir.
Because it's, it's common practice?
It's widely done that way with other cities in central Arkansas. Now, one thing I did not do that some cities do is they allow car washes as either a permitted use or a conditional use in their industrial districts. However, other cities in central Arkansas, their industrial districts are different than ours. We have a very light eye zone, very clean, and you also have school traffic over there, and car washes can be a place for the young people to congregate and hang out, late hours and so on and so forth. It also would've brought more non-industrial type traffic to our industrial district, and the commission agreed with me.
Do you have examples of C3 being so close to residential area like?
Parkway Square. It's right, right against Country Club of Arkansas.
I meant in the other cities that you were talking about, not as compared to our city.
Other cities are a little, their C3 will be a little different than ours, but typically, it's a heavier zoning, a heavier commercial category. We do.
C3 is like a C2 somewhere else?
It could be, but we do things in C3 that we may not do anywhere else, like we allow outdoor advertising. We allow, we allow outdoor display. We allow things like cemeteries, automotive repair facilities, things of that nature.
I think Madam City Attorney may want to address that.
Well, and let me point to the ordinance that's before you, before you vote on the, the amendment. If you notice, it says on page three of the ordinance, the following, this is in considering permitted, then the use regulations for a C3, just under B, the following commercial uses shall be conditional uses when located on property which shares a common property line with property zone residential, and the car washes is listed on one of those. So if, if it's C3 next to residential, it'll be treated as conditional use already by the terms of the ordinance as it is in front of you.
One thing to also keep in mind, Alderman Mosley, whenever you have commercial property, excuse me, abutting residential, you have to leave a 40-foot buffer, 25 feet of which can be parking, and you have to erect a six-foot-high privacy fence.
Aldi, go ahead.
I just was looking at the ordinance as it, as it reads it right now without the car wash in it, and, and there are, there, like you said, there's automotive use and there's veterinary clinics, and there's other things that I, I don't, I, I can't understand why we would allow that by right and not a, not a car wash. I think it doesn't really make sense for us to amend the car wash when we're already allowing those other things by right.
I would point out that you also have a car wash currently in a C2 zoning district.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman Norris.
I'm wondering if the better solution is if you're just focusing on one small area to look into getting that area rezoned to something more appropriate, rather than just choosing just one type of use and sort of making a, treating it different.
Whenever the council considers changing a zoning on a property that, that is already in that use, we, you run the very high risk of being subject to amendment, to the, to the Fifth Amendment prohibition on takings, and you'll have to compensate that property owner for their loss and their property value for the change in zoning. So I would recommend against that.
Okay. And I'm, I'm not overly familiar with this area. Are there businesses in use there that would not work in a C2 that currently can only be in a C3?
In use where, sir?
In the area that we're talking about?
Parkway Square.
Parkway Square.
Parkway Square, no, there's, there's a office lease space use going on there now, and we allow that in most any commercial district in Marmell.
Real estate.
I guess, so what I'm saying is if that area already has stuff that's C2 and C3, a better way of addressing the concerns may be to look at reclassifying that area, especially if it doesn't exclude any properties that are already there, or businesses that are already there.
Well, but I, I think, as Madam City Attorney pointed out earlier, when the, that property, and that property in particular shares a common property line with the residential zoning, the car wash is a conditional use there because of that. I wouldn't recommend rezoning some property either unless it was the request of the property owner, because it's still gonna be a matter of, even if all the businesses currently do, they may not, that may not be their business plan in the future. So, so you still may be subject to a lawsuit with basically you lowered the value of my property, and then they would wanna be compensated for that. So that, that would be the concern. Okay. Alderman Johnson?
Was there another C3? Parkway was one. Was, was there more than one C3 zoning?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, allergies. Where the old Kroger used to be.
Okay.
Marmell U Storage, and Mr. Pfeiffer's property in back, and Harvest Bank, and across the street, Mr. Schickel, and Elite Performance, and on down to the cemetery.
Got you.
That's all C3 also?
Yes, sir.
But that doesn't border on a residential?
Part of it would.
Well, yes, sir, part of it would, and part of it would actually border some multifamily. Highland Point comes to mind, and then Parkway Square borders Country Club of Arkansas. But I think what Madam City Attorney found is that if someone wanted to locate a car wash in a C3 zoning district, if it bordered or abutted residentially zoned property or property being used residentially, it would be a conditional use anyway.
Basically, you're saying not all, all the C3 is that way, so.
Just the certain uses that, that are in that section of code under C3. If bordering residential property, it would be a conditional use. No, not every use in C3 works that way.
Okay.
Some are strictly permitted by right, and that wouldn't be a condition.
Alright, so I, yeah, I would like to leave my motion in place. I just feel like that would give us more, as, as far as airing, let's air on the side of caution of where we could, we could address something. So I would like to leave it in there, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the motion to amend ordinance number 849 to allow car washes, or to make car washes a conditional use also in C3? Do we need to do a roll call vote on that? Okay, alright, we'll, we'll try it without it and we'll see where we go. All those in favor of amending the motion to allow car, to require car washes to be a conditional use in a C3 zone, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
The noes have.
I don't think I understood it. I will throw a yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, I didn't understand which one was which.
I think Birch and I, or Alderman Johnson, I are both yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, two yeses, but I still have.
Yeah, right.
Five noes, I believe, so, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So this, this ordinance will be on second reading at the next item, or next meeting. Next item is the first reading ordinance number 850 waiving competitive bidding procedures. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 850, an ordinance of the City of Marmell, of, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmell, Arkansas, declaring exceptional circumstances, waiving the competitive bidding procedures, authorizing the lease of vehicles and for other purposes.
Okay, you have a memo in your packet from Chief Williams. Basically, we had a, we had an existing contract going with a leasing company, and they have notified us, they will no more lease, they will, they will not lease us vehicles for the same amount that they were, and that's also affected other law enforcement agencies, and so this is something that we need to do. And if you'll notice, we asked that you suspend the rules and do three readings tonight because of the, the time constraint of that. Chief Williams is here to answer any questions on this matter. Alderman Lewis?
Well, we need the emergency clause as well, given that it's less than 30 days.
Yes, we will. Yes, sir.
We can, oh, go ahead, and we'll do questions first.
Alright, alright. Well, can I do one thing? Can we do a first reading first and, and before, oh, you did it? Alright, I'm sorry. Alright, I didn't write it down. My fault. You're that good. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the chief, just real quick here, as far as the rental fee, I'm seeing $700 a month, shall not exceed 700, then the following paragraph says shall not exceed 2,100. What, do they have the right to add on some other things or whatever?
It's three vehicles.
Three vehicles.
Three vehicles, oh, okay, okay, I'm with you. Now, are these for emergency use or non-emergency use?
These are driven by sworn police officers in an undercover capacity. They are not equipped with blue lights and sirens, so as far as becoming an emergency vehicle, they cannot by state statute.
Okay, okay, I noticed the contract said it's for non-emergency use only.
Yes, sir, again, by state statute, you have to have, a police vehicle has to be equipped with blue lights and a siren.
Alright, that's all I've got.
Alderman Kelly?
From what I got out of the memos, we're actually gonna save money.
Well, we are, this, this new professional leasing company has agreed to lease its vehicles at the same price where we've got now. Landers, where we do have our, our lease right now, which is fixing to be pulled out from under, if the minimum wants to go up to 900. So yes, sir, we'll either, if we, we are getting the same price for leased vehicles as we have right now.
So we understand that we can swap these vehicles as needed?
Yes, sir. And that's one of the agreements, and that's one of the, the conditions for helping lease vehicles, because as you know, they've become known to people in the community and they're not effective anymore.
Makes sense to me.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and execute a second and third reading of ordinance 850.
Second. It's been motion, second, that the council suspend the rules and have the second and third reading of ordinance number 850?
Second.
Well, I've got a second. I've got, I got two of them, actually, now I got three. Let's do a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, have the second and third readings?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 850, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmell, Arkansas, declaring exceptional circumstances, waiving the competitive bidding procedures, authorizing the lease of vehicles and for other purposes. Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 850, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmell, Arkansas, declaring exceptional circumstances, waiving the competitive bidding procedures, authorizing the lease of vehicles and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 850.
Second.
It's been motion, second, that the council approve ordinance number 850. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote?
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we engage the emergency clause for immediate ratification of ordinance 850.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause on ordinance number 850. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote?
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. That allows us to enter into contract and keep our officers in vehicles. They might've been walking if we hadn't have done this.
Going to cover on the foot.
Mopeds.
Mopeds, huh? Yeah. I don't know, our workers' comp may have went up if we had to do that. Next item is Resolution Number 2014-17, authorizing the mayor to contract for recycling disposal services. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2014-17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Waste Management of Arkansas Incorporated for the disposal of residential recycling products collected in the City of Marmell and for other purposes.
Okay, you have a copy of the contract, actually, that, that we're asking you to allow me to enter into, and this is one of those contracts that's pretty good, there's no charge for the, the disposal, but at the same time, there's no rebate back to us either. So I just wanted to point that out, that this is to allow us to continue to haul our recyclable materials to the Waste Management Facility, which is known as Recycle America. Alderman Lewis?
Just wanted to say that we began our single-stream service back in February, I believe, and it, by my estimation, is just rolling along wonderfully. I'm seeing more and more participation, and yet Public Works seems to be moving at the same pickup pace in which they were before, and what a great thing. And I know we kinda, we arrived at this conclusion sort of in an odd way, but hey, however it worked out, I think it's been wonderful, and I look forward to a complete year of this service and future use. Thank you.
Great.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just, I was pleasantly surprised I saw that agreement, and I thought, oh, I bet that's 20 pages long, and it was a page and a half, and it, it was simple and it was great, so I wanted to thank you again for all your hard work on, on coming up with a, a great compromise on this, on this recycling. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, we approve Resolution 2014-17?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2014-17. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item is Public Water Authority Information and Discussion, and you have a copy of the bylaws of the Marmell Public Water Authority, you've got the incorporation documents, and then you have some just informational documents on, that were all included in your packet. I will tell you that the Board of MSID 500 has adopted these, and they plan to submit them, but they wanted them to be reviewed by the City Council. I, I don't know if there's any action that's required of us, other than they need the, the city to nominate two board of directors positions, position four and position five. Now, we've had some discussion, and it's, because this is all happening so fast, they like to go ahead and turn these in with names there, that we would appoint two members of the council until this gets stood up, and then basically, then those two board of directors would resign their office, and we actually appoint citizens to this position, is what we've kinda discussed. And so there's, we don't have any formal action that we need to do, other than they would like to have names at this position. Now, how we do that is entirely up to y'all. I mean, I've heard that we could draw straws, or short straw gets it, or whatever, long straw, I don't know, or we can take a vote, or we could do it by nomination, so, but that, there's several ways we could do it. Do want to point out that there's no provision in the bylaws that that person has to resign, so it needs to be clearly understood that, that, you know, if you're appointed, this is the temporary appointment, or, and unless y'all wanna do something different, I mean, but these people would serve, as far as the bylaws are concerned, they would serve for three years and two years. And a bunch of lights came on, and I don't even know what order they came on. Alderman Johnson?
Just a question, I thought at one point we were talking about the two advisories that are sitting on the board with them, and one would be our fire chief, and one was another gentleman, and you know, I think we appointed those, didn't we?
You, you did appoint them as advisors, that is correct. Now, you actually appointed Chief Glenn to be an advisor, and Chief Payne is still serving in that role right now, but I, I've had this discussion with Mr. Heller, and also, I think I've mentioned it to the council, we would not want our fire chief to be one of the board of directors that serves on this position. So, so I, I don't, I don't think it should be a city employee, is what I don't, I don't think it should be, and I think there's even specifications in here that says that you can't be an employee of the Public Water Authority and serve as a board of directors. They're, they're, they have officers in there, but you couldn't be on the board of directors, so I think the same thing should be true of the city also in there. So, so one of, one of, well.
You don't want to hurt anybody's feelings.
Well, I, I would, I don't know if we'd hurt feelings or not, but, but, I mean, it would be fine if the, if the commission wanted to, or, excuse me, the council wanted to nominate Mr. Andrews, who's currently is an advisor, but since we, you know, I think this is something a little different, and I, we haven't even discussed, or I haven't discussed it with him, if he would fill this, this role or not, but, but the, since this is a new creature, for lack of a better word, a new organization, I, I just don't know. It'd be up to the council how they chose to do that, how they fill those positions. And actually, you don't even fill them, you, you make nominations to the board of directors of the PWA, and then they would select from there. Now, they couldn't come up with new names, but they could, if you sent them two names and they didn't pick them, you'd have to send them two more names, so, yeah.
Then if I still got the floor.
Okay.
I'd like to suggest that Preston Lewis become one of the board members. Has, I think he works hard, he goes over there and tends regular and everything, and he would be a good choice, in my opinion, if he would accept it.
Well, it's, and I, I guess, I don't know if we're opening the floor for nominations,
Yeah, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to do that. I've, I don't even really agree with, with the way that they're doing the transferring themselves over to longer terms and, and pretty much ingraining themselves in again. This just, this isn't getting it to the democratic way nearly as fast as we need to do it, so I'm not appropriate to go over there. And I'd, if I can use my turn here-
Yes, sir.
I'd like to suggest Liz Adams as a possible candidate. She was, she was on that advisory committee they had and used to be a, an alderman and I think she would do a great job and I haven't cleared that with her, but I, I think I could twist her arm maybe for-
Could I, could I respond to that? I think Liz would be a fantastic permanent person on there.
Yes.
And I don't want to put Liz on there for three months and have her feel like she has to resign.
Is that something she would have to do?
Well, that's what we're talking about right now, having these names so that they could just, isn't that correct?
Well, they wouldn't have to resign, that's, that's the whole deal. I mean, there's nowhere in the provisions now, what, you know, what we might have to do is, is the nomination, if you want to make sure they resign, you're probably going to have to appoint them, or, well, no, because you're not, you're not appointing them, you're nominating, so, I mean, yeah, you know, it'd have to be their, their choice to resign, so, yeah, yeah. So I don't, I don't know how we'd get around that, Madam City Attorney, that, yeah.
Well, I think once you put them on there according to the bylaws, they have to be removed unless they voluntarily-
Right, right.
Good, Mayor, but I had a question. Thank you for your-
We're not up for public comment just right now, Mr. Scott. Did you have anything else, Alderman Mosley?
No, I think I hit both of my points there, actually.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I am just, I am disappointed that it didn't go further, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Lewis?
I did speak with Mr. Andrews sometime back and while I agree with Alderman Hoag, I think we need to, you know, sort of have a reassessment, not that Mr. Andrews has done a poor job by any stretch, but he has expressed that he would be interested in re-upping, but I think at this point, seeing as how we're dealing with something new, I think it would be good for us to welcome, you know, candidates and certainly if Mr. Andrews is part of that group, then we would welcome his submission for that. Terms of Ms. Adams, you know, the only difficulty I see here this evening is that we need to, if I'm understanding correctly, we need to move expeditiously for purposes of the application that MSID 500 is submitting to the ANRC for creation of this PWA. Now, that leaves me in a couple of questions, but seeing as how we cannot get Ms. Adams, you know, okay tonight, or also the understanding in which this would be a temporary placement, that makes her submittal a little tricky at this time. Now, I do have a couple of questions. Has, Mr. Mayor, has Madam City Attorney reviewed the bylaws or seen them or looked at them?
Yes, she has.
Okay. Would Madam City Attorney, are there any difficulties or problems with an alderman fulfilling that role in an interim basis?
No, I don't see any problems with that at all.
I know that when I've reviewed, I just have one of the questions that you have seen that document, when I reviewed it, there are some stipulations for being able to telephone in and participate in the meeting. By participate, would that include voting? Does it constitute a quorum? Those, that was one area that I was a little, maybe had some questions about. And I know that the council for MSID 500, one of their council is here this evening as well, so just thought I would ask that out there. Did you bring away anything from that, Madam City Attorney?
Well, I, that was one of my specific questions and I don't know, I'm not sure exactly who all received the response to my questions. I had emailed a number of questions and that was one very specific one and I'll just give you the response from Mr. Hankins. Let's see. My statute, PWA board members participating by telephone are fully participating members and attendance for all purposes, including counting towards a quorum. There's no limitation on how many may participate by telephone, that was my other question. The way it works at my bank board meetings is that there has to be a speakerphone at the normal meeting place where the officers would be present for giving their reports and each director may hear and be heard for all purposes on the speakerphone. So according to Mr. Hankins, then it's fine that they may all participate by phone.
So, and the reason I asked that specific question, there isn't anything in here which would be incompatible with an alderman's oath to the city to where, because for example, we cannot telephone in on a meeting, so if we for some reason did that for a meeting, this is a whole different ballgame.
A whole different ballgame, yeah.
Okay.
That's because of the rules that the council operates and are not because of any sort of oath or duty, it's just because that's, those are the requirements of the statutes under which the council operates. These are different types of statutes.
Okay.
So that would not be a conflict.
And the last thing I would suggest then is that another alderman perhaps step forward so that we can move forward with that process this evening. Since turnabout's fair game, I will nominate you, Alderman Johnson, but to say that based on the guidelines that Madam City Attorney has defined, I see no difficulties and I would accept such a nomination. Thank you.
Okay. I have, basically I have two nominations now, I have Alderman Lewis and Alderman Johnson that have been nominated. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I didn't realize you'd responded or had responded to some questions or asked some questions on these bylaws. I'd like to see their responses, if you wouldn't mind emailing them to me. And in particular, on page six, eight point one, they talk about positions number one, two, and three shall be elected by a majority vote, the remaining directors. And then a couple, a couple of sentences down, it says, "Any director who remains in office until his successor is properly, shall be entitled to vote in the election of his or her successor." Did you, did you catch that? And to me, it sounds like it's in conflict, is that?
No, again, that's, that was one of my questions and Mr. Hankins pointed out the provisions in Arkansas Code Antnotated 4-35204B2A, which allows them to continue in office until their successor is elected. And so any vote which would take place until the successor is elected, they would be eligible to vote in.
Okay. And I didn't see the same provision for positions four and five, it looked like they would-
Well, I think those, I'm not sure that it's clear, I pointed out that some of that language preceded the language on positions four and five, but there's no doubt that the same type of process would apply to all five positions.
All right. I have one other question for you. We have a statute here that says they have to bring rate cases to us for approval if they want to raise rates.
Can you back that? We have a statute, what statute?
There is, there is a process where they, they have to come before us and get our approval for, for rate increases.
Well, there's an ordinance which suggests that, but again, that ordinance has been, you know, legally questioned over whether or not the city has that authority.
Well, as long as that's still on the books, I still count it, so.
I understand, I'm not, but I, I don't think you're going to get the same response from, from Maumell Water Management. They in the past have agreed to come before the council, but the council has, has not in the past had the authority to approve or deny those. They're a utility, a separate government agency and can operate separately as an improvement district. So, you know, while, there, there may be a number of ordinances on the books, but not necessarily are they enforceable just because they are passed.
Well, I like that ordinance, so.
I understand.
I-
That doesn't make any more legal or less legal.
Well, what, my question for you was, was by them going to a public authority, does that change anything in regard to that ordinance? You know, have you looked at it?
It would be a separate entity, you'd have to re-adopt that ordinance and try to re-establish some authority to enforce it.
So you're saying, you're saying this ordinance would-
It would be a separate entity, completely separate entity. That ordinance specifically mentions-
MSID 500.
-the district, which would no longer, as I understand it, would no longer set rates and establish those things.
Okay, all right.
I could be wrong about exactly how that will function in the past, but if it is indeed a separate entity, there would have to be another ordinance passed. And again, you'd have the same questions asked of the authority of the council to approve or disapprove of those rate increases because that's not contemplated in the state statutes which establish this kind of public water authority.
We, we need to, we'll visit about that. Thank you. That's all I've got right now.
Okay, are there any other questions regarding the nominations or the Public Water Authority and Madam City Attorney's review of that? Okay, Mr. Scott had asked to make a comment, I think, if you would come to the podium, please, and state your name and address, please.
I'm Rick Scott, most of you know me. I don't live in the city, you probably don't want me in the city. Just had a question, I have not followed up on the Public Water Authority. Are the improvement district then switching over to some other type of management? Is that what we're talking about here?
They're forming a different type of corporation, basically.
Go ahead.
Well, MSID, MSID 500 would become a public water authority that is allowed under state statutes with the same coverage area.
Okay. Essentially, this is something that the legislature has done recently?
Well, the legislature has allowed these mechanisms to be created. It's not, yes, well, I mean, I think it was 2003, is that recent?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm old, you know.
Okay.
Anything within this century is, is recent. So they have, okay, what, what numbers are we talking about here on the code? What would I look up to see?
It's Act 1330, looks like, of 2003.
1330 of 2003?
Yes, sir. It's called the Water Authority Act.
Do we know who was behind it, just out of curiosity?
I don't, no, sir.
I think I'm with Mr. Mosley over here. Yeah, okay, appreciate it. Oh, just one, one thing. Twenty-one years of age, I think the US Constitution has changed the major majority to eighteen. You might want to bring that up to, to them and have them correct that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay, if not, we have, I guess, I guess I have a motion, I think I have a motion to, that the council would like to appoint Alderman Lewis and Alderman Johnson to serve as the, or their names to be submitted to the, I don't even know how this happens really, I guess, since it's not stood up yet.
It's going to be submitted as, as initial directors.
Okay, okay, so, so-
To the, to the, to require-
Arkansas Natural Resource, yes, okay, all right. So we have a motion to appoint Alderman Lewis and Alderman Johnson to serve the initial terms of position four and five of the Board of Directors for the Public Water Authority that's being set up, that would be submitted to the Arkansas National, Arkansas Natural Resource Commission. Is that clear to everybody else? I mean, it's not, you know, to me, but can you-
You're pretty good.
A motion from who?
Well, Alderman Lewis made a motion for Alderman Johnson and Alderman Johnson made a motion for Alderman Lewis.
It was based on the nomination from-
And, and I don't think that requires seconds, I don't think, since they're nominations. Yeah.
And-
Just in case.
Just in case, all right, we have a second if we need it, yeah, for both motions, all right. And this, hope, and, and the goal is to have just some names on the document that can be submitted. And then the goal would be for both aldermen to step down as soon as the, the Public Water Authority is set up. And then they would also be part of the people that pick the, their successors, because they would be the Board of Directors that would then vote on those names that are submitted to the Board of Directors. Okay. Is there any question on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Okay. So, Mr. Hankins, the, be Alderman Lewis and Alderman Johnson to serve those positions. And we have most of the commissioners of MSID 500 in the audience, I think, back there, almost.
General manager.
And general manager, yeah. All right, the next item is the north annexation and sewer proposal. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Alderman Lewis?
Quickly, earlier Alderman Hoag said that I speak water and I just wanted to say, when we started, you know, I got sworn in as alderman back in 2013, that was not an issue that I wanted to get necessarily knee-deep involved in. There's other things that I'm more passionate about, but I will say that at the behest of several constituents that I've started attending their meetings, I've been going to them for the last year, I am looking forward to submitting my resignation at the earliest available opportunity, as I have no desire to serve in that capacity on an ongoing basis. But again, this is not something that I have sought and certainly glad to accept it, but looking forward to resigning, thank you.
Okay. Next item is the north annexation and sewer proposal. You, you all received an email from Mr. Redder that pointed out some items to you and pointed out a possible annexation area and then some possible costs and everything. And so we thought since the email had gone out that, that he'd come before you tonight and present this. Now, this is not, these are all preliminary and I hope he goes into that pretty well, but these are preliminary areas and the, we're a long ways from getting these areas annexed into Maumell, so, yeah. All right, Mr. Redder?
That's exactly right, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman and staff, for the opportunity to talk about this a little bit. My name is Mark Redder, I'm with Holloway Engineering here in Maumell. I'd just like to start by saying that I spent a lot of time after we had started developing an, a sewer extension to the, to the, what, what could be a northeast annexation. And so I spent a lot of time in the Maumell Forward Report that was commissioned and I, I just couldn't help but be impressed by the urgent need to develop this area, which they call fondly the gateway to, the north gateway to Maumell. And there were just so many things in there that, that spoke to the urgency, I thought, of developing this area and getting some commercial revenue into the city. And one of the main hindrances to that, of course, is the lack of any sanitary sewer service. The entire area, including a large chunk of lands that had been previously annexed, do not have sanitary sewer service to them and are not able to be served in any way. And I, I almost feel that this is a great opportunity for the city to, to make an impact up there and to encourage some development and some businesses to come and locate in our city. And also to, to exhibit a little bit of control, if you will, that's maybe not the right word, over the development that happens up there. As you know, some of the areas that are up there, even though they fall-
That's exactly right, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, and staff, for the opportunity to talk about this a little bit. Hi, my name is Mark Redder. I'm with Holloway Engineering here in Moll Mall. Um, I'd just like to start by saying that I spent a lot of time after we had started developing an al, a sewer extension to the, to the, what, what could be a northeast annexation. And so, I spent a lot of time in the Moll Mall Forward report, uh, that was commissioned, and I, I just couldn't help but be impressed by the urgent need to develop this area, which they call fondly the gateway to, the, the north gateway to Moll Mall. And there were just so many things in there that, that spoke to the urgency, I thought, of developing this area and getting some commercial revenue into the city. And one of the main hindrances to that, of course, is the lack of any sanitary sewer service. Uh, the entire area, including a large chunk of, uh, lands that had been previously annexed, do not have sanitary sewer service to them and are not able to be served in any way. And I, I almost feel that, uh, this is a great opportunity for the city to, to make an impact up there and to encourage some development and some businesses to come and locate in our city. And also to, to exhibit a little bit of, um, control, if you will, that's maybe not the right word, over the development that happens up there. Uh, as you know, some of the areas that are up there, um, even though they fall under our extraterritorial jurisdiction, uh, they are not subject to the rules and regs of Moll Mall City. And so, some developments can come without any, you know, oversight by planning commission or council members. Um, so, I'd like to briefly, if I can, just overview the two options that I've, uh, that I've shown, and then I'd like to, um, perhaps, uh, let Jason Polk speak. He owns Lake Liquor, and then Jeff Hathaway, who, um, represents the Brown family, which is the 170 acres that was previously annexed. Um, so, the proposal that we have is, is to be able to extend sewer service to the, um, to the area. Um, we'd like to place a pump station in the southwest portion of the Brown property that, that would pump, um, gravity-fed sewage to the Moll Mall Lift Station, I mean, the Murphy Lift Station located on Murphy Drive. The, um, the gravity mains would then extend up, um, 365 and, and down and, and around the I-40 interchange area to serve those properties there. The, um, and then they would pump, like I say, to the, the existing, uh, Murphy Road Lift Station. Uh, the, the properties that we've identified in this first option, uh, as you see, are about 400 acres and would include, uh, a mix of residential and commercial. And this would be able to serve a vast, uh, portion of that area up there, and additionally, would serve future needs as they became necessary. We feel this is a good option, maybe the best option. Uh, I, I think we're kind of in agreement with the mayor that it's challenging, to say the least, to get this done in a reasonable fashion. But I almost think it's, uh, like I say, it's a great opportunity, and then I almost think a duty of the city of Moll Mall to provide services to, to the previously annexed areas and to take the opportunity to annex as, as, as much as they possibly can to improve the revenues of the city and the future of the city. Now, that, that first map, um, option one, sheet one and two, uh, details the, uh, the larger portion. We've also put together a, a second option, uh, that, that would define almost all commercial lands, and these are lands that, that, uh, the, the majority of owners have expressed a desire to be in the city. They would like to be in now, and they would like to be served with, with sewer as soon as possible. Uh, it's hard to market any property at all that doesn't have sewer service. And it, and although both of these options have their difficulties, and, and maybe hard in some ways, they certainly not, are not impossible, which is what we feel that it would be to try to have one individual property or business try to extend a sewer main into Moll Mall. Um, so, I, I do think that this is the, the perfect time and opportunity to make a difference up there in, in, in the northeast portion. And, uh, I, I, I really think that this is one of those, if you build it, they will come scenarios, especially with the, with the Brown property and some of the other properties that are adjacent to the interchange. Uh, I, I can't see any reason why this wouldn't, this area wouldn't be as popular as the Colonel Glenn Interchange or, or, or some of the other interchanges in Little Rock. Um, so, I, I've kind of said all that to maybe get us around to the point where we're at least thinking about what we can do up here. And, and I understand that there's a lot of things that have to happen, including maybe the sun and stars aligning, but this, this has to, I think, has, has to happen. Now, I would, I, I would like to ask Jason Polk to come, and, uh, and the reason we've asked him here tonight is he, uh, has gone through planning commission with a proposal for a restaurant, um, and it was approved, um, but could not make that plan go forward because of lack of sanitary service up in that area. Um, so, and he's got a previous engagement, and he's way late for that. So, I'd like to, I'd like to ask Jason just to say a few words about that, and, and I don't know, he, he maybe has something else, but...
Thank y'all for y'all's time. Um, I appreciate it. After listening to everybody, I definitely would not want to have to y'all's job. Extremely tough. Um, I lived in Moll Mall, uh, up until about a year ago. We moved over to the Morgan area, which is closer to our business, but this is still my community. This is what I consider home. This is where I go to church. Um, when I was hired by Lake Liquor, my job responsibility was similar y'all's, you know, fix the now, prepare for the future. And so, everything I did was thinking about the future and controlling what we could control. So, the first year I was there, I basically doubled their salary, and they asked me, "What the heck are you doing?" You know, "We're trying to make a profit here." But, the way that I looked at it, it's the way that I think y'all looked at everything, is I decided to invest in people and things that would, as he said, make them come. You know, better employees, cleaner store, the things that make us a destination, people would want to come. So, then I started thinking about, you know, the things that I want, and, you know, the community I live in, I love it here. I was like, well, there's a opportunity for a craft beer restaurant or what have you, and this would be a great location because of what it has done. Um, the sewer didn't make a difference to me at the time because all of our properties out there are on septic. I put septic in it. Well, the ground wouldn't percolate, looked into tying into the North Little Rock or the Morgan enhancement thing that we had part of, and the finances just squashed it. Um, so, I looked at I-40 and think about, I mean, y'all traveled I-40. I mean, not only is the, the artery for United States, but this is the artery from Little Rock to Fayetteville. This is one of the highest-traveled areas in the country, and you have got just untapped land there. I mean, if you drive, I was outside of Selzer, if you go to Oklahoma, I mean, interstate access, businesses thrive. So, I started talking with them when they were telling me what was going on. I thought the same way. I mean, as a developer, me, just random paper off, I said, "I'm not gonna do this because the utilities aren't there," such as, I couldn't imagine why anyone would come in and invest into what is gonna drive revenue for this city if the utilities aren't there. I mean, that's just me thinking to myself as a business person, you know, what would make people want to come? You know, I'm not sure, I'd drive past the Bass Pro Shop and see where it is and think to myself, "Boy, that would've been great right here." But I'm sure if anybody was to look, that's always a concern, is do we have utilities? I mean, that's just my two cents worth, but this is, you know, like, it's my home. I want to see this community thrive, and, you know, by thriving means business coming in, which is what y'all, and all as well. So, if you have any questions, I'm gonna have to answer that up. It's just my two cents.
Alderman Johnson?
Just one question, and probably maybe addressed to Mark more. I noticed you, that you never, you didn't include the other side of the, uh, expressway, you know, the business area over there.
I actually did, in a previous option. Um, there...
Alright, thank you, Mr. Polk.
Um, there, there are several reasons, um, why we ended up taking that part of it off, and, and actually, we had included the northeast, uh, section up there, and, and then, and then decided to take it off. And, and it's more because it, it was almost too much of a bite. There's, there's, there's several hundred acres up there, and, um, to include that at this point, uh, would have been, it made the project even a little bit more difficult. Now, the, the plan is to, to size this pump station such that, uh, a, a, a greater portion could come in at some first, future date. And, uh, so that's what, that's what we've done. And, um, and, and so, the, the two things that we thought we would identify and present to you would be an overall plan that showed a larger area, but then a plan that could happen almost immediately if, if need be. And, you know, the, the big overall plan could certainly evolve into who knows what. We originally had the Jacks property, 177 acres, and we also had, um, the, uh, the Panther area, the entirety of the Panther area. And we actually also looked at including a sewer plant because all of the, you know, there's probably 8,000 acres up north of 365 that could potentially, how many years from now, 20 years from now, be a part of Moll Mall. Uh, so we, so we looked at those types of things, and, and we've been, uh, working with the mayor and with, uh, uh, Moll Mall Water to, to come up with some workable solutions.
The reason I even asked that question was, one time I was told, and you're only talking minute, that the people on the other side of the expressway have a slight advantage over their competitors on this side. I think it's a half percent, I think it's a half, half percent sales tax or something like that.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, I think it was minute, but, uh, anyway, that's the only reason I asked. But it does represent revenue for Moll Mall.
It really does, and it's, uh, and, and in reading Moll Mall Forward, you find that the city currently only has about 10% commercial, which is a much higher revenue stream in, in relation to other properties.
Alderman Norris?
The big takeaway that I got from the, the strategic planning session, or the, the most, uh, uh, lightbulb, I'm picturing a lightbulb being turned on in my head, is, is the, the statement that when, uh, that residential properties use more city resources than they bring in, while commercial and other properties, uh, bring in more revenue than, uh, they use in terms of services. Uh, so I think we really need to be looking at commercial properties. I believe they said at Build Out, if, if everything continues as it is now, at Build Out, uh, the revenues will be less than expenses, and, and we've all heard these things before. I think there's three ways that that can be fixed. One is by reducing or not increasing services at the same rate that they're being provided now, uh, which I'm not in favor of. A second option is to increase the tax rate, move from 1% to 2% or some variation. Um, and I think the third way that we can do that is by raising the tax base. That is by bringing in more businesses that aren't here that will generate additional revenue. Uh, and since we, we, we talk about those problems on a, you know, somewhat recurring basis, I, I really think that we should start looking toward developing the infrastructure that we need to, um, get that done. And I, I, it, it's not an instantaneous step. We have to plan, you know, for the long way out, because even just getting the sewer there, for instance, isn't automatically gonna mean businesses are there and everything is thriving. It's a long process. So, if we think we're gonna be encountering, uh, financial issues down the road, we need to start down that path now to prevent those from happening.
I'd like to, uh, before we forget him, I'd like to call Jeff Hathaway up. He, he represents the Brown family in the 170 acres. I'd just like him to say a few words, so he can get out of here if he needs to.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, council members, I'm Jeff Hathaway. I am a real estate broker and advisor, and I represent a number of Moll Mall property owners, and, uh, I'll try to be brief. I know it's late, but I do agree with Mark that this is a very important matter. And the reason that Mark thought you might want to hear briefly from me is just that I am, uh, one of, one of the Moll Mall property owners that I represent is Industrial Realty Company, which is commonly referred to around here, I guess, as the Brown Family. Um, it is a family-owned corporation, and they do own, uh, a very large tract that's basically at the Morgan exit. And you're probably familiar with exactly how it's shaped and how big it is. It's 170 acres. There's about 110 acres of it are above the floodplain. And, um, it's, I've been working with this family for, for quite a while with regard to a lot of their real estate assets, and really, it's only within the last year that they've been in a position, for some internal reasons, have nothing to do with the property itself, that they've been in a position to make it available for sale. And, uh, we're actually not even actively marketing it for sale right now because we're going through a series of studies, if you will, informal studies, to try to, uh, resolve a number of things that will make us be in a position to really talk seriously with people that would buy attractive real estate of this type and size. And there's just no question that the pre-marketing issue that comes up the most often as we talk about this, and we've been fielding inquiries from people for many, many years, even though this hasn't been actively on the market. It's, you know, is it served by sewer? When will it be served by sewer? How will it be served by sewer? And if we could, I just can't think of a single factor, uh, that would be more important than having the answer to those questions in terms of bringing this property into development. And that's really the main point that I want to make to you. I could talk for a long time about this, but, I mean, basically, um, we don't know what the eventual use of this property is gonna be. Uh, there's no way for us to really predict that. You know that it's zoned for commercial use. We do think that, uh, just as an example, we've had inquiries from this property, everything from a single big box user to big box anchored shopping centers to major, uh, distribution centers, uh, and we've, uh, even had outlet mall-type inquiries. We've had a number of qualified shopping center people that have taken a look, at least a look, at this property as they've examined things around central Arkansas. Um, I would say that it's clear, it's pretty obvious, but just to hear it from somebody who's in the real estate business, the reason that Moll Mall should be optimistic about this tract not just being woods forever is, uh, is pretty obvious. So, it's, it's, uh, only one of a very limited number of large tracts of land in central Arkansas that are located on an interstate exit. Uh, there, there have been others. They've been obviously absorbed. The most recent one that's got the most buzz around town is where the Bass Pro is at I-30 and I-430. Uh, but there, there's become, it's just, they're not making any more of those. Interstates don't get built very often. Exits don't get built very often, as y'all are very well aware. And so, you've got that, you've got that, uh, that's what it's got going for it. And our firm's been involved for years with a number of land sales that have led to development of similar, similar properties. We were involved with the Otter Creek Mall site when it sold, well before it actually got to the point of being developed. We were involved with the, uh, site where the North Little Rock Baptist, Baptist Hospital was built on the freeway over there. We were involved with the site at the, uh, Shackleford Crossing, is at I-430 and, and Shackleford Road. And so, we've seen what can happen. Sometimes it takes a while. Sometimes there's even a land sale or two, once the land is assembled, before it actually gets, something gets built on it. And, but, but all those things, the, the dominoes didn't start falling into place until infrastructure was in place, public utilities were in place. And so, I, I encourage you, I know there's a whole process to go through before anything like this, before we be seeing sewer lines installed out there. And I know we're probably in the early stages of that, but if there's any emphasis that can be put on it by the city council, I would, I would highly recommend that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Do you have a question?
I've got a...
Alright, Alderman Mosley?
Could you go and just kind of circle where the Brown property is on that map, just so we know for sure where it is? Okay.
Everything behind the McDonald's, please.
Alright, that's, that's a great spot. Yep.
All the way to the freeway.
Alright, Alderman Mosley, your light was on also before that, I think. Did, did you have a question?
I, I had four things I wanted to hit on here. I fortunately wrote them all down. I, I wanted to say I agree totally with Alderman Norris on what he was saying earlier. Wanted to thank you for coming, coming, and I imagine several other Aldermen wanted you to try to come.
The response has been positive, I will say that, and I appreciate the opportunity to just, uh, talk about it. Uh, I think, uh, you have a procedure. I know that things don't happen overnight. I, I think that this one actually could, option two could actually happen. I think that this one actually could, option two, could actually happen relatively quickly. But I definitely am beholden to the, to the procedures you have to go through. And I understand the difficulties that you and the mayor have with, with any project. And so I appreciate that, and I appreciate your time. And if there's not any more questions, we'll...
We do, yeah. Alderman.
I had a couple more for you. I sent, I was going to say, say the colors are green or what you are proposing, the gray area is currently in Moll Mel's...
Yes, the gray area is currently in the city of Moll Mel property, and most of it was from the previous annexation of 2007, eight, something like that.
What now? I, I'm sorry.
No, I just didn't remember when the last annexation was, the large annexation.
In North area? It was going to be, it's 2003 or '04, just when it was going to be done, yeah.
Been around longer than I thought.
And at some point, I don't know if we can answer that now, but I was wondering just how appropriate is for us to be putting in a sewer system in that we don't own the water and sewer?
Oh, that's not the question I thought I was going to ask.
What do you expect?
Well, I will tell you that, and all I'm going to say is, all the developers put in water and sewer, and they don't own the water department either, so, yeah.
Appropriate, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's the only way I can answer that question, so, I mean, I mean. Do you have another question or?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Did you need to address something? Yeah.
I was just going to point out that, and, you know, looking at the maps, option two, I think, which he references as being maybe sooner than the other, I think that's already wholly within the city limits, or at least most of it is. And, but option one appears to be mostly outside the city limits. And so the council needs to understand, we are constitutionally prohibited from spending money on something sort of not, that's not necessarily a city concern. So annexation would have to occur before you could adopt a bond measure or spend the money to do this work outside the city limits.
That is exactly right. And, and that is part of the difficulty because that's exactly what happened in the last annexation. So, you know, it, it would behoove us, I think, to go ahead and at least start a process, at least getting a pump station in place, and then you can start the gravity feed from there. You know, without a means of, of getting it to the sewer plant, the, the property's dead in the water.
Well, one thing I wanted to kind of dispel right now is, I mean, Shazam, Bryant, Little Rock, North Little Rock don't own C A W per se either. So just something to kind of keep in mind there. But Adam City Attorney's point was accurate in that, you know, you would have to do annexations. And I do, Mr. Redder, you and I are kind of like blood brothers, aren't we? We've both been in the blood mobile at the same time giving, so surprised you didn't mention this to me. No. I do have a lot of questions, but for the sake of time, I'm going to save a lot of those to, as I indicated, I sent you an email, we would visit at a later date because I'd have a lot. But a few that I would like to ask this evening. First of all, where is the crossing point for the sewer line across the railroad tracks for Union Pacific?
It, it's located on the Joshua, different map.
You, you can see it on that one just barely, but yeah.
Want another option or difference?
Go to option one, sheet one, and he can show it best there.
That is, that is option one.
Oh, scroll down then, or make the, there you go, there you go. Yeah, you can see it right there, Mark.
Yeah, there's a crossing.
Right there.
Okay.
And it would, and it would come to a manhole that's currently located in a car called the business.
Okay. I take it, Mr. Redder, you have consulted with Moll Mel Water Management on this design and this plan?
We have. And, and the initial, they, they indicated that they could handle the initial flow, fully built out, that they would have to, they would, they would have to do some things on, on option one. I think on option, on two, they could, they could handle fully built out.
Um...
They do have some maintenance issues that they have to get over.
That crossing point, is there a size of that sewer line that has been proposed there?
It's a force main.
Right.
So it's a pressure line, and, and we had preliminarily sized it at eight inch.
Okay. You know, that's one thing, if we did look at this, you know, there's that balancing act, and I think we found that out in some of the issues we're looking at with Council of Massie, is that, you know, you want to build as big of a, you know, supply as you can, but there's also what you can get cleared through the EPA and whatnot, and the Health Department, and what you can get cleared for if you don't have a large area that's currently being serviced. That, that's been, to, you know, my knowledge, when I've asked about this before, one of the biggest hurdles, though, is dealing with Union Pacific. But has that been something you've already negotiated with them or had conversations with them?
We have not, actually, but, but it isn't the, the first time that they've allowed a bore across their tracks.
Allowed what's there across the tracks?
A bore.
A bore, okay, yes, thank you. Also, based on this, and I understand you're going to go out and knock on some doors to see about obtaining that annexation along this green area, correct?
That's exactly right. We feel that option two, all of those parties would, I, I mean, the...
They're on board.
The majority of those parties are eager to be in right now. They would come right now.
All right.
Including the Gunn property, including Jason's piece, and, and Mike...
Rector. Rector.
Yes, that's right.
So once that, let's say we were to do option two, and that's all in place, at that point, can some of those other unannexed properties be eligible for the sewer service?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And see, at that point, and that leads me going forward, and I, this is good stuff, and your timing is absolutely wonderful. It's a breath of fresh air to read about this because this is something we do need to be looking at. But I will say, in terms of the financing this sort of vehicle, it would be ideal, and this is something maybe we as a city, and you partnering, you know, with interested parties, look at sort of a combined effort where perhaps if you have properties that are eligible for this that are in the county, where you have not only a cooperative effort with the city, perhaps the county to some small extent, and maybe some private investment as well in making this sort of transition. But it's exciting stuff and something we can definitely keep looking at.
Well, and, and actually, we thought that another scenario could be that you just build what's in the city right now. You, you build the pump station and the gravity mains to feed just what's in here. And that at least gives you close to a couple hundred acres of, of developable commercial property.
Okay. But I have no problem with there being other, and just to be clear, I have no problem with other areas being serviced that are not necessarily within the city, but I see a larger ability to incorporate other entities in making this transition to where Moll Mel has to shoulder, has to shoulder all the burden by itself.
And there again, our, our, our big reasoning was behind getting the 170 plus or minus acres and Jason Polk. Because, you know, the, the, Jason wants to be in badly, you know, and, and the other property is in.
Okay.
So the annexation process for someone that wants to be in is very swift, comparatively speaking.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Hope?
I just wanted to ask, do you have a sizable list of people who are presently agreeable to annexing into Moll Mel? Is that correct?
We do have a list, yes. And, and we're still in the process of making more calls to find out others that are interested.
And you would share with that with us when we have an annexation task force?
Absolutely, we can.
Well, and, and some of those are conditional.
And, and don't get me wrong, we've got...
Well, they're conditional as well.
We've got some calls that we're vehemently against.
I understand that.
You know, and those are mostly the residential properties that, that are not interested in ever becoming part of Moll Mel, are not interested in their taxes going up at all.
But we'll sit...
By and large, the commercial people. And there again, as I understand the process, sometimes you have to drag people kicking and screaming that don't want to be in.
Correct.
But, but it's for the better good of the community and the city.
There, there's also new annexation laws that went into effect last year. And so, yeah, so, so that's an issue. So, I mean, if you, if you bring them in, then you've got to, you've got to provide the services within a time period and all that. So that, that's very clear, the way they're set up in the statutes, and what their recourse is if you don't do it and all that. And, and what is correct is if you get the main infrastructure in some areas, if a development then wants to come in, into the city, you can do an extension further, fairly quickly as opposed to doing a railroad bore and a pump station and some things like that. So, so then you get a voluntary annexation, and then they might even extend the sewer main to get it there if it's a small cost. If it's not $100,000, if it's $30,000, they may be willing to do that.
That's right, because we have budgeted the, the pump station, the lift station itself at $150,000. That's not in the reach of most developers on, on whatever size property, but much less smaller pieces of property.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes, Mark, these two sheets, make sure I understand. One is based on 1200 G P M, 1.7 G P D, and the other one is an alternate everything. But I know you must put a lot of work into putting these kind of numbers together and everything. Is this one for 955,000, is that feasible?
That's option two. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's, that's the difference in option one and option two.
Oh, okay, one's option one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Perhaps should have listed it as such.
Yeah, yeah. It says alternate, but alternate is actually option two.
Gotcha, that's right. Okay, that's what I was really asking. I wasn't asking it right.
That's right.
But, okay, but you did put a lot of work into this.
So in, in, in our mind, around a million dollars is a relatively small investment for, for the bang for the buck.
Oh, I don't disagree with you.
There again, that's opinionated, but I think it's reasonable also.
I hope every, all the council member can fall in line on it.
Alderman Kelly?
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, my question was answered. I was worried about the capacity of Moll Mel Water Management, but it sounds like they're capable of handling the sewer, especially in option two, so. My question was answered.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, ask you and, and the city attorney, it, just to confirm, this is, is a very viable possibility for a bond project. Would you agree with that?
Well...
Not, not, not currently, when it's outside the city limits, no. Potentially, we're...
The ones inside city limits, yeah.
Part of option two could be a viable bond project.
Okay.
Okay? But as long as it stays within the current city limits. Now, because part of option two actually goes outside the city limits.
Does option two go outside? Okay. All right, so just whatever's in the city limits right now, like the Brown property, that would be viable?
Yes, yes. And you would be, to the best of my knowledge, yeah, the crossing would still be within the city limits, the, the railroad crossing is what I'm referring to, the pump station would be, and then all the way up into the, the lake around Lake Liquor. The, you know, there's a lake behind Lake Liquor, and so there's a sewer line that goes all the way up to there. And then, now, there, the, the issue, though, I guess, Mark, and I don't know, I don't know if this has been addressed or not, but there's a current pump station that's owned by an improvement district that is, I guess, maintained, or maybe owned by North Little Rock Sewer now, so that's in this. So there, there's a, there's an issue of resolving something there also, right?
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And from what we understand, they'd sure love to be out of that pump station.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, there's, there's an existing pump station in the Morgan area that serves a lot of those areas that pumps back to North Little Rock wastewater.
All right.
And, and it's, it's on Frontier Drive up there. And so this, this would go right beside that pump station, so I assume it could gravity feed it, and, and that pump station would go away.
Yes, probably.
Okay, probably. Okay, possibly, okay.
And I was also just going to ask if Mr. Hathaway had anybody that said they'd be more than interested in something there on the Brown property if there was sewer, sewer there. Do you have anything in the, in the works or?
That's a good question.
Or gut feel or?
It's, oh, it's really extremely difficult to say that anybody has said, oh, oh, yes, I'm, I'm there if it had sewer, because there's so many other factors at play. Land price, whatever tenant they might be building for, a lot of moving targets in place. And so the, the short answer is no, there's nobody that has been at that level of, of commitment. And I would be totally upfront with you and tell you, we, my, my kind of summation of all this is we do not have anything actively working right now in terms of a contract on this property, but I guarantee you that if we had sewer to the property, our odds of getting there would be dramatically increased.
I just wanted to clarify if, if hypothetically, if we just went with option two today minus the stuff that was outside of the city limits, I would be a, a good deal less than the 955,000, which would make it the smallest bond project. And, and kind of what I was hearing during the, the bond process was that really anything much less than a million dollars, there was questions as to whether it was worth issuing bonds for.
And I, I wouldn't say it'd be significantly less, I mean, because you're...
Okay.
You're, you're... You've still got gravity mains, and you still have pump station.
Okay.
You still have the, the force main, and so those are the higher cost items.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know exactly, you know, how much is in there, but it'd be, you might reduce that one, and Mark did these numbers, but you might reduce under like item, well, they're not numbered. Come on, Mark, you're supposed to number these things. Eight-inch S D R 35 sewer pipe with bedding is 9,000 feet, okay? So you might can reduce that by 1,000 feet, but it, it's, it's going to take $9,000 because it's valued at $9. Now, there's, you know, there's other numbers that, that are factored into that too, mobilization and everything else. And so, you know, you wouldn't be reducing it by 100,000 by probably reducing it out, and you might by 100,000, but it, it'd be questionable because you're not taking a lot out that's not in the city.
That's what I would think.
Yeah.
That's a native bond.
Okay. But you're right. I mean, I was always saying a million dollars was kind of viable, and it's just for the amount of time you have to borrow the money for and all that to make it a reasonable project.
Okay, then, in, in your opinion, is a bond proposal on option two with regards to the, only the, the parts that are within the city limits, is that a, a viable bond proposal? In your opinion?
Well, it could be, it could be. I mean, we'd have to see how much it reduced it by, and then how much it could serve, and then it might be an automatic return on your investment almost. And I'm not going, I mean, Mr. Hathaway can't commit, I can't commit. I mean, if, if you got sewer in the process, then he might have someone that says, yeah, we'll locate on that property. And then if, then sales tax starts coming in off of that in a few years, you know, your return would be pretty great on that. And so that might be a reason to say, yes, it's, it's a viable project. You would also get, as that property developed, the value of that property right now is undeveloped land. So, and I just hypothetically, they put a $40 million facility on 110 acres or something like that, then your property va, your assessed value goes up, therefore our taxes go up, property taxes go up immediately, so, rather than three years.
Is, is option two sort of the revised, in the city limits version, something that you think would be better as a bond issue or as just a, a capital expense or a piecemeal deal or?
Well, I, I think it, it could be a viable, I mean, it would, I think it'd be a more practical bond issue than a pedestrian underpass and overpass, I will say that.
I agree.
For about the same amount of money, because there's, there's a chance of return on your investment on this one. So I will say that. I mean, that's, that's one...
It'd be better than all, all of them if, under that reality.
Exactly. I agree.
Well, it doesn't take a very big store, honestly, to make a million dollars revenue a year, which, you know, at 1%, you know, I don't know how many of them you could have there, but you could certainly have a lot.
Well, and, and, you know, if it's $750,000, is it a viable? I, you know, possibly, I think so. So, you know, but it's, it's, it's one of those things that, it's...
$750,000 might be a capital issue.
Well, it might be, but at the same time, you've also got to look at, you know, your budget and if you're trying to use that money for something else, if you're saving it for something in the future too, so, yeah, so...
What we can know is over some period of time, it would, it would definitely... What we do know is over some period of time, it would, it would definitely develop, and, and that that would definitely mean revenue to the city. And, you know, I tried to, I tried to play the game with revenue numbers, and that's just too much smock and mirrors for me. I don't, I don't like to try and do any of that financial voodoo, because we could project all day long, and it wouldn't mean a thing. It just really wouldn't, because, you know, if you get a huge car dealer in there, you know, that's one thing, but, you know, a very small mall, that's totally nothing.
Alderman Johnson.
Just, Steve, I'll depend on Mr. Hathaway to say I don't know what I'm talking about, but I, I was told many years ago that Walmart was very interested in that piece of property. But, at the time, supposedly, for whatever tax purposes or reasons, the Browns were not interested, they were more interested in leasing the property. And consequently, then, from that point to today's world, Walmart now buys a piece of property and subs off all of the outer parcels and pays for their own piece of property. So, it was sort of a change from the Walmart philosophy, because at one time, they leased most of the places they did, but there was a change, and they were considering that piece of property out there at, at the corner and everything like that. But, you know, it didn't happen and everything like that, and unfortunately, we missed an opportunity for the Walmart to be out there. But, anyway, I don't know how true all that is, but, you know.
As quickly as they relocate, maybe they'll pick a new spot next time.
Alderman Hoag.
I wanted to ask, on the Brown property, when we annexed it, did we promise them sewer?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Redder? Thank you very much, Mr. Redder. Appreciate your presentation, and you-
You're listening.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway, for coming and making your presentation also. Next item is the Annexation Task Force, and what I've done is, is I've actually contacted two Aldermen and asked them to serve on an Annexation Task Force, and talked to Alderman Hoag and asked her to chair that committee, and so she's going to do that, and what, I've asked Alderman Anderson also to sit on that. I've contacted a member of the Planning Commission, and they have not given me an answer yet, but, and I've told them I'd give them a little bit of time, I didn't want to put any pressure on them. And I've also asked Jack Stowe to be on that, a city staff who has been on the previous Annexation Task Force and can help you with the, the history of what's gone on in the past. That's all I'm going to name to that Annexation Task Force. If the task force determines they need more members, I'm going to let them add the members as they see fit. Now, that, if you want to, they will notify, we will notify you of the meeting so that anybody is, is welcome to attend, but we, we kind of just, Alderman Hoag and I discussed it, and we're trying to keep it a little bit small to try to help effectively move it forward on this for right now. But, but everybody's invited, and, and I will tell you, Alderman Anderson needs the meetings to be late afternoon, not a noon meeting or anything like that, to, not conflict with his work schedule. He's not retired like some of our-
I mean, how early is late?
The earliest late is probably 5:00, 5:30, you know.
What's the latest late?
You know, to me, 2:00 or 3:00 would be fantastic, but I realize that you have that problem.
Yeah, because of what it would do, we'd put you here, and then I'd go back to work, you know, I'd be one of those.
So, and as soon as I know, if, if the member I've asked to join from the Planning Commission, if he turns me down, or they, she turns me down, I'll go to the next one, so. But, we'll have one picked here soon, and so, Ms. Chairman, you're welcome to go ahead and assign a meeting, and I'm sure we can have someone on board.
Well, we actually had talked about having one tomorrow. And tomorrow at 5:30 would be fine.
Okay, all right. Well, y'all can meet, and if that member is agreeable or not.
If the blue room's available, we'll meet there.
Okay, all right.
And if it's not, we'll meet here.
Meet in here, okay. 5:30 tomorrow night, okay. There is a, there's an event tomorrow night, by the way, if y'all aren't aware of that. Y'all should have gotten an invitation directly from them, is my understanding.
Is it the Maumell School?
It's the Maumell High School, Celebrity Attractions is doing an event at 6:00 tomorrow night, I believe, or 6:30. Celebrity Attractions is doing a preview-your-seat thing or whatever, so, yeah, but tomorrow night at the high school. So, 5:30 tomorrow night, all right.
And y'all will take care of notifying everybody?
Uh, yes, we-
For everyone.
Yes, ma'am, we will do that. I'll let Mr. Clerk send out an email tomorrow. The, next item is Mayor's comments, and I just wanted to mention, over the weekend, we had two great events. We had the city Easter egg hunt, the city, well, the Parks and Rec Department did a great job with that, and the Maumell Youth Council, and the Peyton sponsored that, again, the Peyton Realty team, and they did a great job with that. But, I was told, I didn't time it, because I had a granddaughter out there, so I was kind of watching her more than I was worried about the time, but I was told it took a minute and 30 seconds to pick up 7,000 eggs.
Totally believe it.
So-
That's got to be a record.
Yeah, I mean-
How many kids were there?
I'm guessing there was probably close to 1,000 people there. They do it on three separate fields, and maybe a little high, 6, 600 to 800 maybe, I don't know, but every field was pretty well ringed all the way around, standing, you know, every three feet, I guess, something like that, so. But, it was quick, and it's not a hunt, it's a, it's a gathering, because they're just laid out on the grass, you know?
Yeah, they're-
Yeah, it's not a hunt at all.
It's a cleanup.
It's a cleanup. And, and it's, it's amazing, there's candy and eggs out there, there's tchitzy rolls, and then there's eggs. They don't mess with the tchitzy rolls till all the eggs are picked up, then they go back and pick up the tchitzy rolls. I mean, and I'm talking at two years old. I mean, how do they know that, you know, but they know that, so. Is that what it is? Well, well, I do know, I do know that my granddaughter picked up one of the tchitzy rolls, and it must have been wet, because she threw it back down immediately, you know, and it's like, and then she went for another one. I don't know what the difference was, but she picked one up and threw it down. But, uh, but, but it was a great event. And then Sunday morning, we had the sunrise service at 6:45, and there was probably 300 people in attendance at that event. We actually had three churches that helped sponsor that. The Methodist Church took the lead on it and provided all the sound equipment and the chairs and everything, but the First Christian Church and Freedom Baptist Church were also involved in it. So, that's the first time that more than one church has associated with it, and so we had a very good attendance. The weather was perfect, I was in charge of the weather, and it was very nice, a lot better than it's been in the past for both of those days, so. But, two great events. The other thing that I have is, I told a citizen, he came to see me, and I told him I would do this, because that's all he asked me to do, is he came to my office about approximately two weeks ago and said, I pay too much tax in Maumell. And he said that he doesn't have any kids in the school system, and he pays school taxes, and he said, I don't use your baseball fields, I don't use your softball fields, I don't use your community center, I'm not going to use the pathway you're building on the boulevard to walk on, and he said, I pay way too much taxes, I don't want you to raise my taxes anymore for any project. So, I told him I would convey that to the council, so. And with that done, I can check that off my list. Planning Commission report, that will be at the next meeting, since the meeting is Thursday. Alderman's comments? Alderman Kelly?
Yes, I'd like to commend the police chief, the police department, and the school resource officers for their quick response two weeks ago. That could have been a major tragedy that was averted with a handgun found at the school, and I think they deserve, deserve recognition for that. It was well done, and I understand it was confiscated, and the suspect was in custody in just a few minutes.
That is correct, and I want to mention also, and Chief Williams is standing here, but the school staff did a great job also, and the administration at the school. Our, our officers did the, the job they were supposed to do, but the staff allowed, they, they did the right response, and then they allowed our officers to take over the situation, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree 100% with the folks you appointed to the Annexation Task Force, and I look forward to what you guys come up with, thank you.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
I don't want any grass to grow.
Appreciate that, that's good.
More property to get.
Alderman Lewis?
One other thing, following up on what Alderman Kelly mentioned, is also, I think, a, you know, sort of a congratulations goes out to a lot of the students at the school as well. I talked to a lot of parents that day, and the communication that they'd had with their children, they had actually drilled for that kind of scenario, I think, the previous day. And so, I think there's a lot of students over there that are also looking out for the, you know, safety of that school as well, and that's, that's what you want. I mean, it's like any situation, your best informers are those that are right there on the ground in your eyes and ears. And, one other thing I wanted to add, at the pre, at the last Maumell Water Management meeting, there was also mention of, they have not taken any action on it yet, but water staging, and this is in the scenario of a possible drought, like we saw in 2012, in which there will be a predefined set of stages in which the water could be rationed if need be. One of the things I do want to say is a positive in looking at this so far, and again, there's nothing certain, if they have to sort of away usage and what's going to be effective and not, but stage two, which is a scenario where there would be once-a-week watering, did include usage of a hose after 8:00 P.M. And that was something that was not allowed back in 2012. And so, I think, again, this is a sign to me that some of the conversations that have been going on between some of the constituents, Aldermen, and Maumell Water Management have been effective, I think, at enacting some change that's positive, and not only helping to communicate a situation that goes forward about possible water rationing, which none of us want to look at, but, you know, does happen across the country and everywhere else. But, it helps to communicate, but also, I think, reflects some of the concerns that the citizens might have if they had certain landscaping that they had put a big investment in, that just needed a little bit of water from a hose, that could be a possibility now. And they welcome, of course, your feedback as well and attendance at any of their meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lewis. Any other Aldermen's comments? Madam City Attorney? Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Just would mention real quick, we still have Civil Service Commission vacancy, Charter School Board vacancies. Those will be on the next meeting where you actually make selection on that. We do, we have received applications for the Civil Service Commission-
And the Charter.
And the Charter School, okay. So, we've received applicants, so it's not as though that I'm asking for more, but there's still, the vacancies is still there, and they will be appointed at the May 5th meeting. If there's no other comments, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
They're moved.
Second. It's been motion second that the council adjourned. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Meeting is adjourned.